2022, and we will call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. First item on the agenda today is to approve the May 10th meetings. Has everybody reviewed those, and is there a motion to approve?
I would move the approval of those minutes.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Motion approved and passed. Next item up on the list is to have a city council liaison report. And Tom, would you please do the honors?
I can do that. Unfortunately, I did miss the meeting because I kind of lost track of the days. But at my age, that's kind of normal. The, I did look at the video, and the, there was a good presentation by the Bladeck. I would encourage you to go and review the tape on that because it was quite informative. It's kind of long as far as what they can do for us and what we, what we get from them. The biggest part of the meeting had to do with reviewing the short-term rental ordinance that is being proposed. And after quite a bit of discussion, they did elect to move forward with the existing draft that's out on the street right now. That's the last one that got promulgated. And we are going to be looking at that and having a public hearing on it for our July meeting. So, and then we can make some either minor changes to that at that public meeting. The target is for it to be, have the public hearing on July and then approve it or vote on it in August, and then we can have it implemented by the first of the year. So, any specific questions? Anybody has? I would, and again, I would also encourage you to go back and review the tape to get an idea as to what the discussion was because it's going to be, I don't want a significant change, but it will bring a lot more of the VRBOs under control. In other words, we'll have a lot more to say about how they, basically how they do business, which is somewhat needed. This year, we've had very few complaints. In fact, as far as I know, we haven't had any complaints on VRBOs in the city this year. So.
The meeting for the public hearing would be sometime in July.
That'd be the July meeting, yes. Yep, July 5th.
Any other questions? Thank you, Tom.
Welcome.
All right, we are now going to open forum number one. What this is used for is if anyone who's not currently on the agenda would like to address the commission, they are welcome to come up, identify themselves, and speak to us. There is also an open forum number two later on, so we will close open forum number one and move on to the subdivision application 2022-001 for White Birch, Inc. At this time, we are opening that public hearing, and welcome the applicant to come up and present.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is David Landecker. Address is 8581 Wren Drive, Breezy Point, Minnesota. And I'm here tonight representing White Birch in regards to this subdivision application. I'm going to go with Jerry's or your staff's PowerPoint that they've put together. I know they've got a lot of different information up there, but essentially what we're trying to do is back in the 1980s, the plat of White Birch VII was originally approved. And, and three lots in that plat were on the end of Chickasaw Circle. If you can get to a picture that shows, yeah. So there's Chick, yeah. So I mean, there's the original plat right there in blue, outlined in blue, the three lots that we're speaking about. And we'll be talking about some additional land on the golf course side, but the Chickasaw Circle is the cul-de-sac at the end. And so it's those three lots that we're talking about. And, and the primary reason for the reconfiguration of the lots and why I'm here is that the lot that adjoins County Road 11, its building site, was evidently designed back in the 80s to front on County Road 11 so that your house would, actually, there's an approach built out there that you would drive in potentially on that approach from County Road 11 and build with your view more towards County Road 11 than towards the golf course. And so the redesign simply moves the lines to the golf course using the elevation of those lots. And here we're getting to the, yeah, keep going, I think. No, okay. So the, so that's the original layout there with the three lots in red and three lots outlined in red. And we're adding that additional land in Outlot E, which is green, kind of on the southerly end of what's lots 32 and 33, now lots 1 and 2. And then go down to the next one, if you would, see what that, so this is the new configuration. The lots just extended longer. You can see the dash line underneath is where the old lots were. The green is the land that will be dedicated to the golf course. And in doing that, we, there's an encroachment of the golf course on that particular lot. The tee and the wellhouse that are there are in the green area, so we're going to be dedicating that. We're also dedicating the green part connects to County Road 11 so that that particular lot, whether it's old or new, would never have access onto County Road 11. That access becomes eliminated in this design. So with that, all three of those lots now have a view where the topography allows them to have a vista looking over the golf course, hence the name White Birch Vista. So they'll all sit up on an elevated plateau, looking out on the golf course. And go down, okay. So the, at, at the end, I mean, as part of the application or as part of what we're suggesting is one, we're adding that additional land. So none of the lots, all of the lots actually exceed the original design, so they're all a little bit larger in area, with the exception of the outlot we're adding to on the south end. That's about 36,000 square feet, and I believe Outlot A that's going back to the golf course is around 20,000 or a little bit more than that. So, so we're gaining more land within the subdivision portion of it. And that's the subdivision part of it. So there are no changes on the cul-de-sac. We're not adding roads. We have created some easements along the property lines, which are required through the ordinance. We've added some additional widths to some of them for the potential possibility that there might be some public utilities in the future, just to kind of safeguard that there's land available for, whether it's sewer extensions or water, whatever it might be sometime in the future that we can't project at this point. Any questions of me on the subdivision?
I assume these are single-family dwellings?
Yeah, these would be just same as they are now, the same zoning on, we're, same zoning which would be conducive to what's in the neighborhood. So we're not changing the neighborhood, and they would be single-family residences. No PUD or duplex kind of thing.
So the Outlot A goes to the golf course, right?
Right.
Part of that easement, the pump house or whatever.
Yes, yeah.
The city water, or sewer's not up there yet, is it? I don't think so. Sewer, it's not city sewer up there.
I think there's a possibility that it could get extended there, but there is not today.
Yeah.
Everything that is on, part of that subdivision is on individual septic. There is a potential, though, that if they wanted to, they could extend the sewer into those, at least those three lots, and maybe even further. There's also part of this plat, there's, there's also proposed to be easements down property lines, which are something that doesn't really exist in most subdivisions. So if in fact the sewer extension were there, were done, that could happen through one of those easements.
Well, thank you. We may call you back up if there are more questions. Jerry, would you kindly do the staff review?
I'm going to summarize just by saying the applicant is seeking to replat the three lots, add some property from an existing outlot, and take away some property and creating or dedicating it to, or basically trading it to, the existing outlot. The proposed lots are single-family, proposed use is single-family. The, the lots are actually a little bit bigger than what the three present lots are. Staff would recommend the approval of the preliminary and the final plat and recommend that the city council approve those plats, or that plat.
Thank you.
And the plat is actually White Birch Vista. It's, the new plat will be White Birch Vista.
Does anyone have questions for Jerry?
So it gets rezoned to R1, I see, huh?
Pardon?
So it's here, it's going from commercial to R1. So, res, single-family residential.
There's a portion, now, there's, there's two, there's two parts to this.
Right.
There's a, there's a public hearing for the replat, which you're at today. There's also another public hearing which would come after, which would rezone a piece of property that's being added to these lots. It's coming off of resort commercial zoning and going into an R1 zone.
Kind of thought that, all right.
So it, it's easier if you handle them separately rather than convoluting it.
All right, at this time, we'll welcome any public input. If anyone in the audience would like to come up and speak, please do so and state your name and location. Any input? All right, we'll close the public input, and we'll close the public hearing at this point. And then we will go and move to discussion. It sounds like to me that this is fitting within the specifications that we need for lots, and I don't see any reason not to approve. Does anyone?
I agree.
Do we have a motion?
I would move the approval of the subdivision application.
Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Motion has passed. And we'll close this and move on to open hearing number G, which is the rezoning. So we welcome the applicant back.
Ma'am?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. We have a motion. Now let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any not in favor, say nay. All right, motion passed, thank you. And now we're moving on to opening hearing number G. So we welcome back the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. David Landecker, Breezy Point, Minnesota, representing White Birch. So as you approved the plat ahead of this discussion, if you go back to the pictures, we're looking to the part of the plat that is on the south that is currently in Outlot E, which is golf course. We are, yep, keep going down, the yellow portion there, go, yep, you're good, right there. So that yellow portion currently is zoned resort commercial, and we'd like to get it rezoned R1 to be as part of those lots that it is adjacent to, so there's no confusion as to, you know, what the zoning is and how they can build, et cetera. So the rezoning is for that portion of Outlot E that's being attached in the yellow. And that's all I've got to say on it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Does anyone on the commission have a question?
That, the yellow area on the bottom, what does that back up to?
The golf course. The, it overlooks the 18th fairway and then the 19th, or the 17th green. So there's that little kind of pond down there, kind of, you know, you can sort of see, yeah, the arrow is right there. So it's in the woods. It's unused golf course property right now. It's just wooded, wooded land, which was fortunate for us to be able to, allow us to do this reconfiguration.
David, the reason you're doing this is to make those lots more desirable.
Particularly the lot that was on County Road 11. I mean, that lot right now, seriously, is viewed as to County Road 11.
Right.
And there's some real challenging topography with that particular lot, with the topography that's out there. So by adjusting this, the lot, what's now becoming Lot 3, it allows it to have a view that actually is looking at the golf course and, and has, you know, direct access off of the cul-de-sac versus any thought of coming off of County Road 11. So it just enhances that lot. The other two lots really don't change much. I mean, their building sites actually stay pretty much where they would have been regardless of what we're doing here on the plat. But it's that particular lot on the north end that we're doing it for. And, you know, you think, well, why go through all the trouble to do this? And it's really because in my estimation, that's not a very good lot to begin with. I mean, that third lot is just, it's so challenging just because it's focused to County Road 11 and not the other part of the, the resort. So.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry, would you share your thoughts, please?
Again, the purpose of the, of the request is to bring the zoning in conformance with the replatted lots. We wouldn't be talking about this except for the fact that there was part of the resort commercial properties that was added from, taken from the golf course outlot and added to the residential lots that are being proposed. Again, it's to make it consistent. We didn't want to have a lot that, or we didn't want to have an existing residential lot that was zoned a portion, one thing, and, and the other portion, another. So this was to bring consistency to the replat and to the actual land use in the, in the area.
Any questions for Jerry? All right, we will open this up for public input. If anyone would like to come to the podium and address this issue, please do so. All right, without any public input, we will close the public hearing, and we'll move on to discussion. Does the commission have any other further questions?
Please forward.
Do you want to entertain a motion?
I would move the approval of the application for rezoning.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion has passed.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next item on the list, we have a conditional use application, C22-001 of Richard and Mary Jo Newman. We'll call them, at this point, we'll open up that hearing, and we welcome the applicants to come up to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Lisa Hanson. This is Bill Newman. We are here representing the Newman Trust. We live at the property. We're looking for the approval to move in a garage. If you're not familiar with the area, it's Shaft, we're at the corner of Shasta Drive and St. Moritz, just across from Antlers. And there's quite an incline to the property. It, when the previous owner built the house in the tuck-under garage, they built it into the side of the hill, left it abandoned for nine years, along with a pretty unsightly hole next to the house.
Yeah, where they were possibly going to originally put the house.
So it just sits as this big gaping hole next to the house. Our hope was that to make it more aesthetically pleasing to the eye neighbors, now with summer upon us, we definitely noticed an uptick in traffic on Shasta just because of vacationers and golf carts and people golfing. And I feel like it would just make the property look so much nicer.
That's the garage there that you want to have.
Moved in.
Moved in.
Yep.
It needs to be re-roofed, and solar tubes on the roof got to go away. We're going to repaint it to match the house, of course.
Yep, our, our long-term plan was to move in the garage, paint it the same color as the house by the end of fall, and the next spring, tar.
Does anyone have any questions?
How big is that, that garage that you'd like to move there?
I believe it's on the application. I think it's 20 by 24, or is it 22 or 24? I can't, I never get it right.
20 by 22.
20 by 22, so.
So it's almost a two-car garage. It's only got a single overhead door on it, not a double.
And I think you've already answered my question, which is you would be planning to match the look.
Yes, yep. That was our game plan for the fall, is to repaint the house because it's been quite a few years, so it would line up perfectly with a new garage and painting both the same color.
My OCD would go next.
Any other questions?
So you have to get a permit to put the foundation in?
Yeah, we have submitted a permit for, a building permit part.
If we approve, right, Jerry?
Pardon?
They need a, a permit to put the foundation in for the garage.
They need a building permit to do the, the whole project. They also need a conditional use permit because a moved-in structure, the, the ordinance requires moved-in structures to be a conditional use permit.
Right.
So there's two parts to it. If the CUP is approved by the commission, they could apply for a building permit to do the, the foundation and bring the, the building up to code?
Okay.
I guess that we were looking at this as step one, and then looking at the building permit.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
My point is, if we approve it, they still have to go through all the other steps, so.
They still have to go through the other steps that a normal building permit would go through.
Right.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Jerry?
Again, this is conditional use application, 22-01. Applicant is Richard and Mary Jo Newman. Property address is 30603 Shasta Drive. Legal description is Lot 1 and 2, 26th addition to Breezy Point Estates. The zoning is R3, or the original neighborhood. Appropriates code is 153.033-C14. The request for conditional use is to move a, or relocate a used structure, 22 by, 20 by 22 garage, from an unknown location to 30603 Shasta Drive. I believe there's pictures in the, in the packet of the proposed move. There's also some pictures in the, in the packet of the existing structure that is there today, the dwelling. Upon review of the conditional use application, the commission needs to consider findings as required by Section 153.119. In review, the commission should state whether or not the finding is acceptable towards granting a CUP if applicable. The following must be considered: A, conditional use should not be injurious. Conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development, improvement of surrounding vacant properties. It will not create excessive additional requirements at public cost for public facilities. It will promote and preserve the Northwood character of the community. The conditional use will have vehicular approaches to the property, which are so designed as not to create traffic congestion. The proposed use is in keeping with the residential character of the nature. Adequate measures have been taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading. Use in keeping with the residential character of the neighborhood, creating normal additional parking and loading requirements. Adequate measures have been taken or will be taken to prevent control of offensive fumes, dust, et cetera. Conditional use will not result in destruction, loss, or damage of natural scenic or historical features of major significance. And the conditional use will promote the prevention and control of pollution, ground, surface waters, including sediment control and control of nutrients. The applicant has filed the appropriate application. The application has been paid, the appropriate fee. Notice of the hearing was published in a legal note, newspaper, and was also given to all property owners within 350 feet of the properties. The public hearing is being held Tuesday, January 14th. Staff has reviewed the site plan, CUP application. As the ordinance states, moved structure is an appropriate conditional use in an R3 zone. The following may be appropriate conditions for approval of the CUP. Applicants shall obtain a building permit for the structure and the foundation. Applicants shall comply with all setback requirements. Siding and roofing of principal structure and accessory structure or the moved-in structure shall be of similar material and color. Structures shall comply with State Building Code. Height of the moved structure shall not exceed 15 feet. Potential actions that the commission could take: Deny the CUP for the moved structure. Approve the CUP for the moved structure with conditions.
All right, any questions for Jerry? So as you were stating before, Jerry, this is really just a review for us to determine if moving the garage is an acceptable solution, given, does it fit with the neighborhood? Is it all those conditions from A through Y? Is it correct?
It's, it's really consistent with the, with the use in the neighborhood. There are detached garages in the neighborhood. There are attached garages, but basically it's a residential use for residential property.
Any other, any other questions?
One, if we approve it with the condition that the, or siding and roofing principal structure are color and similar, who enforces that?
We do.
Okay.
That's part of the building permit. That, that's, that's part of the, the official, that's part of the record. And, and by accepting the conditional use permit and applying for a building permit, they have to commit to adhering to the conditions of the approval.
Okay. There's a couple places.
R3.
Yeah, it says R2, but.
Yeah, that's a misprint. It says R3 in the first page, by the way. I might add that any place in Breezy, the ordinance requires any moved-in structure that's been used. A used moved-in structure requires a conditional use permit.
Any other questions for Jerry? All right, let's move to the public hearing. If anyone in the audience would like to come up to the podium and share their thoughts. Welcome your opinions at this point. All right, we will close public input and close this portion of the hearing to move on to discussion with the commission.
Did you say that you will be reshingle, you're gonna put a new roof on it?
Yeah, we have steel roof on the house.
Oh.
Yeah, make it match.
So you're gonna do a steel roof on the garage, too? Similar color to the house?
Same as the house.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's time to be repainted to match the house as well.
Good.
Yeah, those are some really old pictures we have of our house up there. Yeah, those are really old.
Sorry that I did this to you. Actually, I was supposed to ask you to come to the podium, but it's too late now. It's too late now. No, it's my fault.
Any more questions, discussion? Maybe it seems like something that's, we're just approving a, simply a move and making sure that if we want to add any conditions, we can do so to ensure it fits in with the, the look and the theme of the neighborhood. Do we have any motions?
A motion for that C22-001, I guess that's the condition. And with the conditions one through five as stated by Jerry, and I think that should cover it.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second that.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion has passed. And we will close that portion down.
We would like to just thank you, everybody. And I just wanted to add that I would think that all of your worries would go along with an inspection at the end. Thank you.
And we are moving on to item number K on the agenda. Ann and Scott Miller, 32566 South Bay Lane, application variance V22002 from May 10 of 2022. Clarity. So at this point, we welcome the applicant up if they wanted to speak.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. Thanks again for approving my variance last month. Had a meeting with the excavator and the house mover, the guy was gonna raise the house, we were planning on trying to save the structure. With, going through the, the plan with that, when the earth is so sandy in that, in that area over there. So when you start to excavate, you need to draw, you know, quite back your, your slope to, so you don't have such, you know, the structure to fall or the, the sand to fall in. And we were worried about it would, the soil wouldn't be able to meet and support the, the building up on the pilings while we dig it out from underneath. Could cause a potential, it could fall in the hole, create a big mess or, you know, then I'd be back to square one. So what I was hoping to do was get your permission to start from scratch. Still the, the same end result of what we agreed on last time, except take the building down so we could start with a safe project, dig it out, put the footings in, and then build up. And then I'd probably be up, you know, I'd do more, I'd meet the building energy code better because then I'd have to do, you know, energy trusses, two-by-six walls, be a lot better building. So that's, I'm just asking to just change the beginning of the structure, the construction portion of the project, you know, but same end result. That's what I'm asking for, so.
So basically same footprint, same.
Same everything.
Not turning into a two-story or anything else.
Just worried that it would have been unsafe to do it the way I was proposing at the first, at the last meeting.
Any questions from the commission?
Could, could the new structure be built on whatever you call it, where the site plan would, what you're trying to do is get closer to the lake, I see. Wouldn't you be better, I mean, to build under the, what do you call that area where you can build?
There appears to be a building envelope that would accommodate the, the new structure and the,
Right.
the rebuild.
I read the note here about larger driving surface. It would seem like it would be less driving surface because the house would be in the building envelope or the footprint, wouldn't it?
We'd be running into still with the impervious surface. Those calculations would, would not meet the impervious surface calculations. And I finally found a septic designer. And so my, my neighbor to the south, I believe it is, his well is 20 feet from the property line between the two of us. So to get my tank in there, it has to be between the, you know, to get the setbacks to meet it, be right in that spot, too. I couldn't move the house back into the envelope. I would, I wouldn't have no place for my septic tank done either. I'm not trying to go closer, closer to the lake, and I understand, you know, if I take down, try to bring it back inside the envelope, but I still, with the, the way the lot is situated and the impervious surface, I can't meet those calculations. I can't make it work. But you guys approved it last time to, the end result's the same. You know, I'm not changing the footprint. Everything's the same. I just want to start construction differently. That's all I want to do.
Question of Jerry. Do we need to amend the action, the previous action we've taken, Jerry?
I, I think you, yeah, you should make a motion that you would approve the rebuild.
Okay.
Again, the proposal that we received for the building permit was different than what was presented to the planning commission.
But we don't have to.
We did not, we did not as staff feel comfortable signing off on something that was different than what was presented.
We don't have to go through a public hearing and.
No, that, I don't believe you do.
Okay.
If in fact there would have been some contention, probably would. I, I think the question still remains why they can't put it in the building envelope to begin with. I think that needs to be part of your reasoning for approving something.
So we approved the original on with redoing the porch or whatever that.
Basically it was an addition to an existing structure.
Right. I see this is a totally different. Maybe I'm wrong, you know, I don't know.
I'm trying to imagine how to word that motion, Jerry. Trying to determine what exactly we're doing here.
You're, you would be approving a rebuild versus an addition on an existing structure.
Okay.
And the reason you're approving that is, I think, essential to why you're gonna do it. I think, I think you need to have a reason for doing it. Is the, is the practical difficulty the fact that he can't locate his septic system in any other position? Or is it, is the practical difficulty that he's gonna exceed impervious coverage, which if the building is the same size and it's moved, there shouldn't be any difference in impervious coverage, quite frankly.
So the location of the septic system is the reason?
I believe that's the issue. Now, you know, based on the, the information that Mr. Miller provided me that I got today, and I give you a copy, I gave you a copy of the, the email. He's contemplating the location of this septic system. And if he's gonna put it where he's planning on doing it, he's gonna have to go through the variance process again in order to get a variance to put the septic system closer to the property line.
And you realize that?
Yeah, I just found that out today, yeah. So that's another whole process.
Isn't the drain field across the road by the shed? So it would be a sealed tank, basically to pump it across the road, right?
Correct, to a, yep. Be pumped up to alongside where the garage, where the, across the road up into that upper left-hand corner. And that, that was the designers, the reason why I might, you know, I'm gonna try to ask for a variance next month also to, just to push it five feet closer to the property line instead of the 10-foot setback. Just give me a little more room to pull vehicles and equipment in and out of that garage. It's still doable, but it's, it would give me a little more room. The property behind me is all wooded, neighbors, excuse me, the neighbors. It wouldn't infringe on his sewer system as well, on his structures or anything, so, but we'll, we'll, you know, I'll get all the proof of that for the next meeting, you know, if you approve this today. Yeah, it's a, it's a challenging lot because of the road and everything, so.
Actually, the road helps them.
Is it?
The fact that it isn't a road.
Yes, that it isn't, yeah. But I still lose the square footage, so it kind of.
I would move that as a result of the difficulty in locating the septic system, we approve the rebuild of this project.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second for that motion?
Just have a quick question.
Sure.
I can't remember now, that septic, was that a, a drain field or was that just a holding tank?
The, the tank actually would be behind the house between the garage, the road, and the, the proposed garage. That's where the tank would be, and then we'd be pumping to a pressure bed, they call it.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Where the drain field would be. But the drain field has to be a certain size, too. And that, just kicking that towards that property line, five feet would give me a little extra turning radius in.
Sure.
So, but he's working on that design right now, so I'm trying to get that hopefully within a week, and then I can give that information to Jerry, and then we can move forward with that.
Good.
And with your motion, you're including the findings from last time included in that?
Correct, yes, that it would be included.
Roger, do you have a question?
No.
Well, we have a motion out. Is there any seconds for this motion?
I would second that motion.
We have a second. Let's take this to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion has passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to, next item on the list is the agenda. April 14th, we had a meeting where the Board of Adjustment approved a variance V2202 to constrict an airport hangar. And that has expired. So this is a request to reapprove this. If the applicant is here and would like to speak, we welcome them.
Madam Chairman, my name's Jeff Hammer, and I'm the one purchased, purchased the lot and didn't, nobody uncovered the fact that it, variance had expired, so. And I'm here to ask, are there any questions or? That's about all I got to say about.
Are there any questions from the commission for Jeff Hammer?
Well, if you're building, are you gonna build the same as what we approved before?
Right.
Okay.
Any further questions for him? Thank you. Jerry? If you mind sharing your thoughts.
Again, because technically the variance had expired and no one had, had done anything with that variance since 2020. When we got, received the application for the building permit and looked at the, the variance and the terms of the variance, we found that it was technically void. And we did not feel comfortable, again, approving a building permit for something without having support from the planning commission. I think there's, you know, you, you could find that the, the variance is void and, and it's, we should go back to the, the the application again and revisit, not revisit the application, but redo the, the public hearing. Or you could find it wouldn't be practical to do that because the proposal is the same as what was approved in 2002 and just support the fact that it's, that we should, it's more practical to forego the, an additional public hearing and just allow the building permit to happen as long as the terms of the original variance are adhered to. I think those are the potential actions that the commission can take. But we're, we're looking for some support or direction more than anything else. I, and in, in Mr. Hammer's defense, I don't believe he was told about the variance. I don't believe he was told about the terms of the variance. And I think he was told that everything was up to snuff and he could just go ahead and build his hangar.
Any questions for Jerry? Madam Chairman, I have a question for you. If you would mind coming back up. Just to confirm with the conditions of the, the previous findings, are you, do you have any questions on that? Are you okay with how everything was outlined when the variance was approved?
Right. I never seen that when I bought the lot, you know, and you have it, the search and everything else didn't come up, but the retained wall and all that, that's gonna be just fine.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, do we have anyone, we'll open this for public opinion if there's anyone in the audience that would like to come up to the podium and speak. You're welcome to do so. All right, we'll close the public hearing and move to discussion with the commission. Any questions or thoughts?
But do we need to make a motion?
Pardon?
Do we need to make a motion to?
I would prefer that you did.
Okay. While I make a motion, though, we approve what the existing conditions is, as before.
We have a motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
I would second that motion if Roger would include the stipulation that this is an extension for six months.
Six months are typically a year, right?
Pardon?
How long do we typically extend these?
Typically they're for six months.
Six months.
This is more than, than that. He's actually going to act on it right away because he's got an application for a building permit in already, so I don't see the extension as being necessary. I think you're just reaffirming the original variance that was issued in 2002, or 2020.
Essentially, it's just a reapproval.
Yeah, reapproval or reaffirming.
And reapproval would be for six months?
Pardon?
The approval would be for six months. I mean...
I don't think you have to worry about that because it's being acted on right now. Quite frankly, if it goes down another six months, I don't, I don't think you really should, should approve another one.
Okay. Okay.
So are you rescinding your request or amendment?
I withdraw what I was saying.
Do you...
And I will second the motion.
We'll second the motion. All right.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any? Motion has passed. Okay, moving on to item M on the discussion, City Council Direction on Home Occupation Licensed Daycare Facilities. All right, Jerry, I welcome you to share with us what you have here.
Okay. When the daycare facility, the Ash Town proposal was approved by the planning commission and then it was appealed to the city council and the city council approved that appeal, that voided the action that the planning commission had. And so doing, the city council basically directed the planning commission to look at daycare facilities and look at how the ordinance inhibits and/or promotes daycare facilities and to review and make some recommendations as far as how better to handle daycare situations. We introduced that last month. I put together a very simplistic review of the ordinance. And basically, the, under the current ordinance, the licensed daycare facility, 12 or fewer, is allowed without a permit in any residential district and the urban reserve zoning districts. It's no approval by the city council at all. Any daycare facility over 12 persons, serving over 12 persons, the ordinance is silent in all those districts. And the whole ordinance is silent on daycare facilities greater than 12 persons. There's a catch-all in most of the zones and the ordinance, which basically says uses listed as permitted conditional interim and prohibited in these zones shall not be considered all-inclusive. Uses similar to those listed may also be considered. I think that catch-all probably is something that allows the planning commission some discretion in how to handle different requests for land uses, whether it's daycares or home occupations or that type of thing. There's also a conflict between the daycares with 12 or fewer in our ordinance and the actual licensing requirements that the state of Minnesota does through the counties, they have a cutoff of 14 people. So there's kind of a, you get a license from the state of Minnesota and they tell you you can have up to 14. Our ordinance basically says you can only have 12. So there's a conflict there with permitted daycares. We get to the point of, go ahead.
Could I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Is it possible for us, as a city, to be more restrictive about that than the state? Usually that isn't the case. Usually the state...
No, actually, I think sometimes the cities are more restrictive than what the state is. You can't be less restrictive. But you can be more restrictive. I think that's your discretion. You should have some basic reasoning why you do that, though.
Is it two people, or not employees, but per daycare? Is that how that works?
Actually, the, a license is approved by the state of Minnesota based on the number of people that is being served. And the number of, the type of people being served and the number determines how many people you have to have on staff in order to service those people. I believe up to, in a daycare facility, up to 14, it takes, there's a minimum of two people needed for those 14 people. Does that answer the question?
Yeah. Yeah, that's kind of what I thought, but, yeah.
The more people you serve, the more people you have to staff.
Then you have employees. Technically, I suppose you could be just husband, wife, mother, daughter, mother, I don't know.
Now, there's also an exemption for, if you're a grandparent, you're taking care of your grandkids, you don't need a license to do that.
Right.
Even though you're providing the same service that would be at a paid place of business, you would not need a license if you were serving family members.
Right.
And there's also a certain number per year, certain number of days per year where there's an exemption also. Isn't something that's happening? I think what we're looking at is something that's happening on a regular basis for pay. The questions that we have staff have put down that I think need to be answered is, should a daycare facility of 14 persons be allowed anywhere? Or should we leave the ordinance silent on that?
Yep. Do you want to reset your, it's been an hour? Well, it's been an hour. Oh, okay. Never mind.
If they should be allowed, where would you allow them? In what zones? Do you allow them in residential zones? And if you do, you know, what's the, where's the magical place for them to be allowed? And if you allow them, what's the vehicle that you use to allow them? Is it something that's allowable, something that's conditional, something that's permitted, something that's not allowed? Or is it an interim use, per se? And again, should there be a maximum size that's allowed in some of those zones and some others not? Just a note, the Little People daycare center that's up on Edgewater Road across from the school, that was approved back in 2004 as a conditional use permit. And I believe that facility has licensing up to 90 people.
But that's in a commercial...
That is in a commercial zone. So, again, I don't, I don't think you're going to answer all these questions at one time, but the intent was to maybe bander it around a little bit and/or think about it and come back with some ideas. You know, maybe ask folks that you, you have some dealings with what their thoughts are and that type of thing.
Jerry, I'm still not clear why the city council did not agree with our decision. Can you clarify that for me?
I believe because it was done as a interim use permit for home occupation, they felt that the home occupation definition, because there were more than, there were proposed employees, that that was a, it didn't meet the letter of the ordinance.
The number of employees?
The proposal that was in front of the city council had, I believe, four employees.
Okay.
Home occupation, the way it is stated today, has a stipulation that they have to be members of the family.
Right.
And these were people being brought in along with the family or the applicants themselves. So that, I believe, was the reason, the major reason why the interim use permit was denied.
So if the employees or the additional employees would have been members of the family, we would have been okay?
And living in the premises, yeah.
In the premises, okay.
I think that would have meant, that would have met the terms of the home occupation better than what was there today.
So Jerry, with this, what I'm understanding, we should kind of mull this over, think about it, come up with some ideas if we think there should be perhaps a revision to then come back and revisit this at a future meeting. Is that the next plan of action?
I think there, you know, if in fact you come up with some ideas that we can put into ordinance form and then, you know, you take a look at that and if that meets your perusal, you can hold a public hearing on it and then make a recommendation that the city council either do X, Y, or Z. They're looking for some direction from you. That's not to say that it always, that they take all the direction that you're going to give them, or, but you're going to give them a recommendation. They're asking you for a recommendation about how to handle daycare centers in the future.
Jerry, does anybody know why, I'm sure this was done years ago, why there is a requirement that those employees be a member of the family or living, well, says member of the family?
I think that's pretty, that's pretty standard in a lot of older ordinances.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the intent there is that a home occupation is by definition a home occupation. It's just the family members that are doing it. If you were hiring people in, then it becomes a commercial operation as opposed to a home occupation. And I think that's where that historically came in.
And I can see where that could be an issue if you start out as a home occupation and one member of the family is no longer present but is needed to continue the operation. I'm just thinking with this group, then if, you know, it's a husband, wife team, if one of them ceased to continue, they'd have to hire somebody or cease the business, then according to home occupation.
The other thing I thought of is if this home occupation business required, evolved to the point where it required a specific skill or credential that a member of the family did not have, all of a sudden, that would be a criteria to make it a commercial enterprise, which I'm not sure makes sense to me.
So is this something we should be also looking at home occupation and what that definition is for the city and whether that's still making sense for...
That's really what the city council is asking us to do, right, Tom?
Right. They're looking for recommendations on how to resolve this for the future. And the responsibility for revising the ordinance or, you know, making ordinance changes lies with city council.
Right.
But they're, they're looking for you to do the work essentially and make the recommendation to the city council.
So if we wanted to make a recommendation, what's the proper process for us to go about? Would we bring that up in, under other, or would we formally put some proposal together?
Essentially, you'd be doing the work and coming up with a revised verbiage and then sending it to city council for approval. That's what they're looking for.
So it would be zones, basically, or numbers also? So it'd be commercial zones, could have a daycare?
Yes to all of the above.
Yeah, okay.
I think, I think when you start looking at the issue, it's where do you want them to be? And under what terms do you want them to happen? You know, is there, the fact that this, all those ordinances are silent, or all those zones are silent on anything larger than 12, do you want any place in town where they can have an operation larger than 12?
My hunch is the reason the city council is asking us to do this is the city council understands, as we do, that childcare is a valuable asset to the community. And we don't want to make it harder for that asset to be in this community. Am I right, Tom?
I think, I think you're, you know, kind of getting there. When all of these, when the ordinance was drafted a long, long time ago, okay, daycare was really a minor thing.
Right.
People didn't have that much. Now, since the pandemic and everything, daycare is a huge thing. And we have, we don't have enough of it. So, I mean, it's, the conditions have changed, obviously, and the requirement is heightened.
I would argue that, as we've talked before, workforce housing is really important, but even more important is workforce childcare.
Right. From a priority standpoint, yes.
If that's, if that's a priority, where do they, where do you want them to be?
Exactly.
Where do you want them, or under what terms do you want them to exist? That's kind of the, I think, where you've been going to.
And it becomes complicated. Childcare mandates the number of employees you have.
The number of employee, yeah, the number of people served are, dictates the amount of people that have to...
You can leave that running.
Serve those people.
Right. Yeah, no other enterprise I can think of does that. You know, the state mandates the number of employees you have based on the number of children you serve.
All right, I want to break in because we're going to take a two-minute break.